At this time, I would like to call the Lee County Board of Education meeting to order. At this time, I would ask that everyone please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Each December, the Board of Education has the opportunity to reorganize. As a reminder, nominations for Chair or Vice Chair do not require a second. To that effect, at this time, I will take nominations for Chair.
Dr. Dawsonbach, I nominate Eric Davidson for Chair.
Ms. Womack has nominated Eric Davidson for Chair. Are there any other nominations? There are no other nominations. We will close and ask for a vote. If all of those in favor could signify by please raising your right hand. Can get confirmation from Ms. Bowen, who is joining us virtually?
That's an aye.
That is unanimous for Mr. Davidson. Congratulations, Mr. Chair.
This time, I will open the floor up for nominations for Vice Chair.
Chair, I'd like to nominate Sherri Womack for Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Patrick Kelly for Vice Chair.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. It's closed nominations. We'll vote on by again raised hand for in the order they were nominated. First of all, for Vice Chair, Sherri Womack. If you'd raise your right hand. Those voting for Patrick Kelly for Vice Chair. Like so. This time, we'll have our public comments section, but we do not have any public comments this evening. So we'll move on to our next item, which is our Lee County Schools Vision Statement.
Lee County Schools Vision Statement is in partnership with the community and will provide challenging and learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovations, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society.
And now our code policy, 2120 Code of Ethics for School Board Members.
Code of Ethics for School Board Members, Policy 2120. The Board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the Board must adhere to an accepted Code of Ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the Board. Avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the Board. Avoid the misuse of public funds. Avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts. And avoid making confidential information public. The Board accepts the Code of Ethics established by the North Carolina School Boards Association.
You. This time, I would receive the nom- and approval of our agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agenda for 12/12/2023.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our agenda is approved. Now, I will receive a motion for the approval of our minutes.
So I'm making a motion to approve the Call Board Meeting from November 6th, Regular Board Meeting from November 7th, Special Call Board Meeting for December 4th, and then the transfer student appeal hearing forum, December 5th.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are approved. We'll move on down to our announcement reports. These non-action items defer to our past previous Chair, Sherri Womack.
Thanks, sir. The greatest leader is not necessarily one who does the greatest things. He's the one that gets the people to do the greatest things. That's by Ronald Reagan. I am so extremely proud of this Board and the last year, the things that they have been able to accomplish together as a team. Under their current leadership, this Board collectively accomplished many unprecedented things in which we should all be proud. Here are just a few of their achievements during this current leadership. Unprecedented before, this Board authorized an internal investigation of a sexual predator that had been working in Lee County Schools for 10 years. The results of that investigation helped establish new policy clarifying mandatory annual anti-grooming training and Title IX expectations. Performance audit with significant findings to improve our schools resulted in reorganization of the central office, resulting in significant financial savings. Proactively, we addressed the Parents' Bill of Rights six months before the House took it before the legislature. Successfully, we have started schools two weeks early after completing community and staff surveys, securing multiple resolutions of support for calendar flexibility. We went through rigorous, a very rigorous national superintendent search. That was a 12-hour day for these Board Members. We selected a superintendent, which my last final act was to put him where he belongs up here. And the Board, for the first time in history, presented the budget to the county commissioners consistent with law. Currently, our Finance and Facility Committee Chairs meet regularly with county leadership to collaborate on meeting the needs of Lee County Schools. We have a paid performance and staffing study that is still in the process. We've established a new superintendent evaluation tool. We have, we've had multiple contributions throughout this with the entire leadership together, and I'm just extremely proud of them. We have a whole list of goals ahead of us that we have already established. This is attached to the agenda under the Chairman's Report online if someone would like to see it. Again, I would just like to say I'm extremely proud of this Board and the actions that they have taken so far, and I look forward to us working even harder in the next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, and thank you for your service this past year as the Chair of our Board. Thank you. This time, it's opportunity to hear from our superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Few updates from the district. Testing at our high schools actually begins tomorrow and will run through next Tuesday. I know the students, staff, and administrators have all worked hard to prepare the students, and we certainly wish them well. As a reminder, high school students are released at 12:30 PM on exam day, so just be aware of that. And of course, those exams run through next Tuesday. With our new calendar, just keep in mind when students return back after break, they will be in four new classes. Performance audit update, I did want to give a brief update on where we are with that. Of course, you know, these findings were presented to our staff in July of this past year. The group that Evergreen that did the performance audit looked at eight different groups, which were on the Board of Education and District Organization, HR, Finance, Facilities and Management, Technology Transportation, Child Nutrition, and Curriculum and Instruction. Between all those eight sections, there were 97 findings/recommendations of those. There are still three that will require Board action, which is about 3% of those. Already, actions that have already been completed by our staff and/or the Board are 49 of those 97, which is around 51%. Recommendations that are in progress that will take additional time are 37, which is around 38%. And then recommendations that we don't feel warrant the actions recommended to us are eight, which is around 8%. So we will continue to work through the performance audit, but at this point, we have completed 51% of the recommendations given to us. I wanted to give the Board an update on the Parents' Bill of Rights. As you know, that is something that the General Assembly passed. There were some technical corrections made, so I want to clarify some things. We just received this information in a webinar yesterday, but I want to make sure that the Board and the public is aware regarding certain portions of the Parents' Bill of Rights. As part of the bill, school districts are required to develop a Parents' Guide to Student Achievement and make this document available electronically to parents. The Department of Public Instruction yesterday did provide districts with a template that they could use during a webinar, and our team met to review that proposed template, and we will begin working to revise the document to reflect Lee County Schools. There are varying interpretations within the revised legislation, which states that we are to have this in place no later than the first day of school after January 1st, 2024. The Department of Public Instruction interprets that first day of school to mean August of 2024, but there's, there's some, there's some folks going back and forth, so our team is working to have this document in place by January 1st, so that regardless of how it's interpreted, we have met the law. So we will be working on that Parents' Guide to Student Achievement, and we will have that posted to our website. That document does not require Board approval. We're going to follow the template provided by the Department of Public Instruction. So just wanted you to be aware in case you start hearing that. We are working on that, and we'll have that up and posted likely before we get out next Tuesday. Final thing, Christmas break is upon us, believe it or not. Tramway will release early on Friday, and those students will be on Christmas break as well as their intercession and will not return until January 8th. Traditional calendar and early college students get out next Tuesday. That will be a half-day for those students, and they return on January 4th. With that, we want to thank all of our students, our employees, and our families for a great first half of the school year. It has flown by, and no doubt the latter half will as well. I hope everyone takes some time to relax and enjoy family and friends and celebrate the holiday season. Merry Christmas to everyone and Happy New Year. That concludes my report.
Dr. Dawsonbach. Our financial report, Kelly Jones.
Mr. Chair, members of the Board, you have before you the financials for the month of September. Open to any questions that you may have.
Any questions from Ms. Jones?
Next, you have the Board expenses as of the end of November.
Seem to be any questions from that? All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Board Attorney, does he want to say anything tonight? Okay, thank you. This will take us into our committee reports, and I will begin that with the report from Curriculum and Instruction. We met on Wednesday, December 6th, which was just last week, and we had a full hour of some great information that was shared with us on access testing. Angel Mills provided that information to us and to share about the testing procedure and some of those challenges as well. And then we heard from Dr. Mizzola on our mental health resources, and we had a lively discussion about that. And I intend to send this slide presentation with the entire Board. I apologize for not having that to you already, but I want to get those, those presentations to you, so you'll be aware of what is going on in those areas. Very good information that was shared with us. And the Curriculum and Instruction Committee will next meet on Wednesday, February 7th, 3:30 PM at Deep River Elementary School Media Center. This time, recognize our facilities and technology. Mr. Ladati.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Facilities and Technology met on November 28th and had three items, one for consent agenda, one for new business, and one just a general update. On the consent agenda tonight is a contract for Microsoft Licensing for the 2425 school year in the amount of $60,932.01. That contract covers Microsoft Office, cloud services, that type of thing for the, for the entire district. And that was the unanimous opinion of the committee to put that on the consent agenda. We also heard about a needs-based public school capital fund grant applications for the Southern Lee High School auditorium and classrooms, East Lee and Wesley Middle School Gymnasium and renovations. And I believe after the meeting, one additional grant was added prior to the Finance Committee meeting. I think Mr. Rommel has some more details on that, but that was placed on new business for discussion tonight. And we finally heard an update on the Lee County High School stadium repairs. We received, we solicited a second opinion and received that second opinion right before the meeting tonight, so it's not prepared to speak to you now, but it'll be discussed in the next meeting. And we're hopeful we can get started on those repairs sooner rather than later, depending on that, the outcome of that opinion. And the next meeting is Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024, at 4:30 PM at the Heinz Education Building.
Thank you, Mr. Ladati. And now we'll hear our financial report from Mr. Rommel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the Finance Committee met on Tuesday, December 25th. We had several items on the agenda, so the first one that Mr. Ladati spoke to also was that Microsoft licensing request. Just real quickly, that will increase the number of licenses for end users from 800 to 1,000, and there are several application and security benefits over the existing license structure. That detail's available in the packet. And the Finance Committee also unanimously recommends approval of that contract in the amount of $60,932.01. And again, that's listed on Consent Agenda for tonight. We talked about EC contracts over $50,000. There were two of those, and those are contract services for an occupational therapist and a full-time physical therapist serving five schools. Both of those satisfy requirements for student IEPs, and they are listed on tonight's Consent Agenda as well. We reviewed the banking services RFP, so Ms. Jones put that together for us after doing some benchmarking in surrounding counties. And that RFP will satisfy recommendation 4-7 from the, from the performance audit, which touched on banking services for the, for the district. That RFP would come down at 12:00 PM on January 19th in 2024, and those proposals will be reviewed in the January Finance Committee meeting, and we can bring a recommendation to the full Board in February. So that RFP is available also in the packet for tonight for full review and is listed on the Consent Agenda. We reviewed the 2023-24 budget resolution, so now with the state budget approved, funding can be allocated appropriately for this fiscal year. So again, that resolution's available in the packet tonight and listed on tonight's Consent Agenda. We reviewed the 2024-25 budget calendar. So Superintendent spoke with the county manager recently, and the short story is, is it was stated that if the school system can provide our budget request to the county earlier, obviously that'll give them more time for consideration, to ask any questions, and to, you know, do the things they need to do to make the county budget. So with that in mind, you will find that the budget working sessions have been moved up to February in that new calendar as opposed to March, as it, as has been customary in previous years. And that will allow the Board to approve our budget in April instead of May, so again, a month early, and get that over to the county. So you can see that budget calendar again in the packet tonight. And then we did also briefly discuss the, the Classified Staff Salary Study that's been ongoing, and we expect to have that report in January. The hope was to have it in December, but finalizing that. So we will have that to discuss. The last two things were the Needs-Based School Capital Fund Grant and the Referral Bonus Program. Both of those are listed under New Business, so we can talk about those in more detail later. And with that, the next Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for January 25th at 5:00 PM in the Heinz Education Building.
Thank you for your report, Mr. Rommel. Before we have our policy, Policy Committee Report from Mr. Gaster, just want to, we haven't intentionally ignored you, Ms. Bowen, and we're glad that you can be here with us, but we would ask that everyone remember Ms. Bowen's family. She's had a death in her family, and she is away from us, but she wanted to be at the meeting tonight. So thank you for taking time, and you have been in our thoughts and prayers. Mr. Gaster.
So back on November 20th, we had a policy meeting, and some of y'all might have got the latest email today, but it come to my attention that the changes or the additions to some of the policies were not highlighted, and so you should have received a fresh email this afternoon. So we're working on in the future to try to simplify that method, so everything that comes from draft form, from committee, when it comes before the Board, everybody see the same thing. So I'm gonna kind of mull through it a little bit, just for everybody's information on some of the stuff, and we'll go from there. So all of these policies are up for first reading tonight. So what I'm gonna start with, and I'm gonna go by what's on the agenda, being that they're in order here. So we'll start with Policy 3400, the Evaluation of Student Progress and Final Exams. Basically, what this entails is, I believe Mr. Dawsonbach is where he had mentioned before about having some kind of reward system for if you done well in, in your grade, then you would have an option of coming back in either testing to, but it wouldn't affect your final grade. You see what I'm saying? Let me see here if I can find it right quick. My paper that I had from the actual committee meeting is not in the same order as this, so it'll take me just a second here to find it. So one is, is, let's start with the first page on final examinations. It's just some added language that was added. The Board requires specific final examination given in all classes that require state assessment CT test shall serve as the final examination in designated courses in grades nine through 12. That was one of the addition. And what I was just talking about is actually the final assessment, examination exemptions, where it states the Board wishes to reward high academic achievement by exempting qualifying students in grades nine through 12 from taking final assessments, examination according to the following criteria. And as you can read along, I'm not gonna read them out, but you'll see the different criteria stating that, where they can take the exams or they can be exempt from those exams. So moving on down, Staff and Student Relations, Policy 4040. This was state changes, general statute changes that were added in here. In my copy, all of these are in red, and it's just reflecting what was done by law. Basically, down here is reporting inappropriate conduct down at number four. The big thing was, instead of it being reported to the Superintendent of Public Instruction, it's now reported to the Board of Education, State Board of Education now. And along with that, it actually has some other language down into that now, which you can read that on your updated copy. In Policy 4240, Child Abuse and Related Threats to Child Safety. Some of the same verbiage is just, is basically state changes. You can catch that there. Policy 4318, the Use of Wireless Communication and Other Electronic Devices. What, what the committee did upon recommendation from the Granville County Policy is we kind of meshed the two policies together and created this now policy with a little bit more meat in it, to try to give some more disciplinary actions for use of wireless devices. It adds extra language. More specifically, it added like smartwatches, different things like that that kind of explains a little bit more exactly what a wireless device can be. Also, too, on that, there was a change from the original committee, meeting down at, under policy, right at the beginning, under A, Authorized Use, when it gets down to elementary and middle schools. The original language said the instructional day was defined at the time of the first bell begins, and we had some feedback from concerned teachers and principals, especially in middle schools, that students coming on campus and eating breakfast, sometimes it created a nuisance by having their cell phones out. So now the language reads in the first reading at the arrival of the student onto the campus for the day. So that begins the school day there. So we just changed that language there. And the student searches, it kind of elaborated a little bit, Policy 4342. It kind of... Policy Forty-Three Forty-Two, it kind of identified exactly what some personal items were listed, and exactly, you had to be specific on what you were searching for. That was some of the changes in the policy, and that come down from the state. Drivers, discrimination, harassment, employee attendance, and leave, all of those really didn't have any regulations behind them, and so that was just information for us to create some type of regulations that they created to give those a little bit more teeth in those policies. And if nobody has any questions, I'll give you all our next policy meeting.
Mr. Chair, if you do not mind, before we move to the action items, I had a question for the Finance Committee. The Evergreen has a contract with us. I was under understanding, what date does that contract end for the pay study? Are we extending past that contract date because I thought that contract ended in December? And now you're saying we can get that information in like January, February? Do you recall those dates?
I don't recall right off. The only recollection I have, I guess, right off was just for the amount of that project. I don't recall the due date.
Ms. Jones may know. That's important because we may have to talk with the attorney if we have to extend the date, the due date.
My understanding from the Board was that we were approving the dollar amount. I don't know that we approved said timeline. I don't think it's specified on the contract itself.
Okay. If we could just take a second look at that. Some reason I had five December on mine, but I could obviously be wrong. The next question I had was for, probably more so for our attorney. When we're talking about facilities and technology, I noticed on the updates, it talks about the demolition of the existing building of the new garage, and immediately goes into saying the housing, the cults, facilities, storage for emergency managements, things like that. If we own that property and it belongs to the school system, do they not have to have some type of agreement where they rent that particular area about the Jonesboro site? Because we're already paying for the Jonesboro site, but it's been established through multiple meetings and the last time you presented to us in reference to the bus garage being the county's responsibility? Well, I'm actually just looking at the minutes. It says, and it talks about the Board and the Superintendent. It's like a casual statement. It's in the minutes, talking about us discussing it with the County Manager and the County Commissioners. That's not an issue of discussing it with them. I just need some legal clarification on what they're allowed to do and not do without this Board's permission. Because it's under my understanding, we own the property at the Jonesboro site. Am I correct, Dr. Dawsonbach? So, therefore, if we own that property, and all of a sudden, they're making plans that they're going to put a new, you know, not only the new bus garage, which they're obligated to do by law, as you discussed earlier, but now they're talking about housing, the cult facility, and the storage for the emergency management. How would you recommend the Board go about that since we actually own that property?
Point of information, if the attorney is speaking, I can't hear him.
Okay. Thank you.
Realizing that as you spoke up, Ms. Bowen, sorry about that. So, what I'd said was that I would need to look specifically at what's being proposed because different uses may require different approaches. But as a general matter, yes, on your property, if someone is using your property, you are gonna need some sort of agreement, often with other governmental units. We enter into an interagency use agreement, that there may not be money exchanged, but there needs to be some parameters around priority of use and types of use and things like that. If they are gonna be building facilities that they would be responsible for, many different districts have Emergency Management Memoranda of Understanding, that's a mouthful, that, you know, again, lays out who's doing what, who's responsible for what, who has to talk to whom to do various things. And then, when it comes to maintenance of buildings, that's gonna be a specific, again, contract or agreement around who's doing what, who has to carry the insurance, who has to carry the maintenance costs, et cetera. So, I would need to see what's being proposed in order to tell you. With a bus garage, it may be a little bit different from housing emergency management vehicles versus building a baseball field, you know, those types of things, community use. And obviously, if there's a non-governmental unit that is gonna be using the property in any way, that's gonna fall under your facilities use policy, and there's gonna need to be rentals, and it's gonna, there's a priority order, and who has to pay what, and what type of insurance they need to provide.
Because who would be the first to initiate this proposal for the school board? Would it be the County Commissioners, since they're ultimately responsible for the bus garage facilities?
I don't know that there is.
Or would it be us because we own the land? I'm just curious.
Right. I don't know that that particularly matters. I think some informal conversations among leadership is an important piece of that. And then, that would lead to sort of either a joint proposal or one Board approaching the other with a specific set of priorities and action items. But there's no specific legal process that says the Commissioners have to approach you or you have to approach the Commissioners. So, again, I'd be happy to look at specifically the different uses that are being proposed here and try to give you more specific policies and statutes to look at, but that's the overview.
Mr. Chair, if I may point information on this, F and T Committee has had no discussions with any County Commissioners on this particular topic, and the statement that Ms. Womack is referring to is in the meeting minutes from October twenty-fourth, which was the last meeting prior to this most recent one. And it mentions the conversation between her, the former Board Chair, at the monthly breakfast with the County Manager and the County Commissioner. So, we haven't talked about entering into any agreements, and I'm sure that would be a conversation with the full Board if and when that conversation needs to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Ladati. Any other comments, discussion related to this? Give you a chance. Ms. Bowen, did you have anything?
I did not, other than a simple clarification on the Policy Committee. The last action item under Policy, the one on Driver Sixty-Three Fifteen, it did add some requirements that the gist of is that it's inadvisable for anyone employed in the District to be traveling in a vehicle alone with another student. It requires two adults to be traveling with students. And so, I think it was looked in with some of the other regulatory changes, and I wanted to make sure that that was specified because with this being first reading, if there's any issues that that policy raises, we would need to know that before it became set in stone next month. But I think, other than that, no further questions.
Thank you, Ms. Bowen. Mr. Gaster, I think you were gonna give us your next meeting.
Yes. So, our next Board meeting, our next committee meeting will be January sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four at five PM at the Heinz Education Building. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gaster. Just wanted to say to everyone that I believe this is time well spent when we have these reports, that we go into some detail, and it takes a little bit of time, but we want the community to know what is going on, because sometimes it might seem like we're just up here saying yes to something we've not ever had a real part in. But I guarantee you that there have been many hours spent in these committee meetings, and these folks are doing a fantastic job. And so, they're sharing information so that we can be just as transparent as we can be. And I would encourage you to look online, and all of these documents are there. Please look and read to be informed about what is going on in your schools. That is important. And so, I think it is important that we have some time that we do spend going over these things so that people are more aware, and it's not that we're just up here saying yes to everything that comes across. There's been many eyes on it, so I just wanted to add that. And thank you all for all that you do on your committees. This time, I would ask for approval of our Consent Agenda as it is presented.
So moved.
Second. Have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Bowen. That was yes, right, not a no. Okay. It's that lag sometimes. Okay, we do not have any unfinished business, and we'll move on to our new business. And I will recognize Mr. Ladati and Mr. Rumel to talk about our Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund Grant applications. We're excited about this, and keep our fingers crossed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, just to give a little bit of information about this, and there was some discussion about putting this on Consent Agenda, but we wanted to give some airtime to this because it is kind of a big deal. So, I don't recall, I couldn't recall a date right off, but it was found several months ago that there is this state grant program that provides funding for building and renovations of academic structures. So, a little bit of detail, the state this year has allocated two-hundred-and-fifty-four million dollars to this program, and they have several criteria that are weighted to allow the state to award grants to those counties who apply. And we believe that we are positioned well to be towards the top of that list, hopefully. I don't want to speculate that we will receive these, but I think we're in a good position. So, where we are listed currently in their tier system is anything that is awarded would require a five percent match from the county for those funds. So, that is why these applications must be approved by both the Board of Education as well as the Board of Commissioners, because it would, you know, obligate them to provide funding. So, Lee County is submitting applications for the Southern Lee Auditorium Build, East and Wesley Gymnasium Projects, and the Lee Senior Auditorium renovation. And the rough total for all three of those projects is forty-point-three million dollars, and that would leave, so if all four were approved, would leave the county responsibility at two million dollars. So, that just kind of shows the weight, I think, of the potential here. But then, basically, I just wanted to note that the grants are awarded in April, so all of those projects will remain on the CIP request to the county. And we do plan to have, you know, a contingency for capital fund should the county fund one of these projects fully, and then we receive a grant in April. We would have a plan on how to spend that funding, rather than returning it, I guess, is the short story there. So, those items will be presented with capital outlay. That's all the notes I had, Jamie. If you have anything to add.
Just from a facilities perspective, they're the projects that have been on the books for quite some time. We haven't altered any requests or anything based on the potential possibility of getting a grant. So, like Mr. Rumel said, you know, we're pretty excited. I think total cost was about forty million dollars. I think the grant last year had two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars in it, the pool that we're pulling from, and I'm not sure how many other grants from other counties are gonna come in. But as Mr. Rumel was saying, our need-based rank is maybe a little bit higher than some other counties, so we're hopeful we can get a project funded.
We're always excited about free money, and so we appreciate the work that's been done on this. Entertain them. Oh, sir, let me ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that the Lee County Board of Education approve the Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund Grant applications.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion, questions?
Well, I would like to, discussion part was, I sat in on three classes that had to do with these grants. We are actually very, we're at higher risk of being able to get this grant because we've never had it before. The slides that I sent all y'all from those classes, Harnett County actually received that grant, and is now eligible to apply again. So, there were several grants that were sent in the email, and hopefully, we're gonna look at all those. I really do believe that we not only have a good opportunity to get these grants that have to do with the lottery fund, DPI also has some additional grants that we might want to look at as well. And that will be good. Thank you.
Do want to say thanks to Ms. Womack for attending the class that has enabled us to have this information. So, any other comments, discussion?
I guess I'd like to give a shout out to Ms. Eggers and her team for the write-ups of these grants. They were turned around pretty quick, and if you guys read through the detail there, I think the justification is very well stated for each of these projects and hopefully leave us in good position.
Thank you for mentioning that. Thank you to our team. They all do a great job, and we appreciate it. Again, we would encourage anybody and everybody, this information is available online. If you want to know what we're looking to do with these grants, please go there. So, we have a motion, a second. Any other further discussion? All those in favor of approving these grants to be submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it's approved. Go to next, our Referral Bonus Update. Mr. Rumel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have nearly as much detail here, but just to touch on this, and again, this one we wanted to bring to the Board, just, you know, for the airtime so folks know this exists. But we did approve a referral bonus program, I guess, more at the beginning of the current school year, so that was back in June. The Board approved the program up to one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, and to date has only actually used twelve thousand. So, the request here is to extend that program to be used for second half of the year recruiting purposes, and basically stick with that same cap that was provided before, the one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars. And I would note that that is coming out of ESER funding. So, yeah, this, the request here is basically to approve the same system we had before just for a new period of time. So, I suppose with that, I would make the motion that the Lee County Board of Education approve the referral bonus plan.
As presented, and that it goes, is effective through the end of the school year. Is that safe to say?
That is correct.
Okay. Through the end of the school year.
A second.
Motion and a second. Thank you, Mr. Ladati. Any other discussion?
How much do we still have left in the ESER funding once this is done?
So, the ESER funding is all encumbered at this point. So, it's, I guess, everything is planned to be spent with this particular program, though it was the original one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand and has been spent down by twelve thousand, so approximately one-hundred-and-thirteen thousand left for this program.
Thank you.
I will say that we did not approve this program in December of last year, so I think we're, or at least I'm hopeful that we'll get some more takers this year. I think we approved it in July or August of last year, which might've been a little late. So, I appreciate the Board bringing it forward now for the next calendar year. I think, you know, maybe we'll get some more takers.
Thank you for that. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it is approved.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Lee County Board of Education go in closed session under NCGS One-Forty-Three Three-Eighteen, One Point One A, One A Three, A Six, to discuss confidential student information under NCGS Eleven, One-Fifteen C Dash Four-O-Two, to discuss confidential personnel information under NCGS One-Fifteen C Dash Three-Nineteen, and One-Fifteen C Dash Three-Twenty-One, and One-Forty-Three Three-Eighteen Point Eleven A Eight, for the purpose of reviewing safety components of the school improvement plan, and to consult with the Board's attorney and maintain the attorney-client privilege.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in closed session.
Session?
Mr. Chair, I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the Human Resources Report as presented.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that Lee County Board of Education approve the following contract, one of your contracts.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to adjourn.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. We are adjourned.